Next.
All set? At this time, I'd like to open up the Parker Rick. Meeting. Fifty two twentieth two thousand and twenty three. Six.
Four five.
Six. Six is.
Jay Vitaleco.
Yeah.
Richard De Silva.
Here.
Billy de Blasio.
Here.
Eileen Frankolino.
Here.
Tim Wagner.
Here.
Anthony Kowalski. Matthew Kowalski. Ed Marshon.
Yeah.
Nicole Payne. Don Woods.
Here.
Mister Chairman, you have a call on.
Thank you, Melissa. At this time, bunch of linkins. What did you leave just? Uh, this says one nation. Under. We live. So I do. Have approval of the this May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty three. Any additions or substitutions?
The move.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion. Public transportation. Correspondents.
Mister, Mister Chairman, I've been notified that. I've been notified that two agenda items want to be added. One is an email from DJ Zorn, the Fire Department. And another one is, is from Tim. Um, from our board in regards to the concerts at the municipal parking lot.
Don, which has the first one?
I do.
Do you?
Yeah, uh, are we adjusting it now? I think.
No, if you could just, all you have to do is add it to the.
Okay, so I'd like to add the agenda of the letter from the fire marshal. Uh, what's his name? DJ Zorden.
As I think as correspondence and potentially new business for a vote.
Okay.
So I didn't say that, do?
You, well, I think I said it for you probably.
Okay, so.
As long as Melissa gets it.
Yes.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Didn't you had one now?
Yes, uh, for the Saturday night concerts at the municipal lots. Under your business.
That would be, yeah, new business, right? Good.
That's new business, okay?
Yeah, second.
Second.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes for two. Okay. First thing is a thank you note from Transition Academy.
Yep, just sharing that with you, there are neighbors down the hallway and we get along great and we're happy, happy that they're there and I, I think they're finding it mutually benefiting for everybody.
Yeah. One key donation in the memory of Penn J Sullivan.
Yep, just wanted to share with you the generosity from resident of forty dollars. And we're gonna put it towards summer camp scholarships. And for those of you who read the, the letter, for those that are watching on public, Ken Sullivan was one of the, I, one of the main factors of me getting into the Parks and Recreation field. I, uh, you, he was a mentor of mine and when he would roll up when I was a little kid to Elizabeth Green with that trampoline, uh, it was just the, you knew it was gonna be a good day at summer camp. So, um, God bless Ken Sullivan and I'm sure he's looking down at us now.
Okay, any other questions on that one? Next one is a donation in honor of Arthur A. Eskel. Eskimo.
I. I. I think that's the same topic, isn't it?
Susan Mazikoli.
Susan Mazikoli.
Mazikoli.
Yep, Susan Mazikoli, uh, she came in the other day and donated generously donated a hundred dollars. We're so thankful for her total support as many, as many know, she moved out of town but still supports a lot of the programs and the people in Newington.
Okay, any questions, uh, on the monthly report?
Um, there's one other thing under course, new, or this course, we've got the, you wanna share, Melissa, share with the group. I'm not sure if it's on the screen, I can't see it, but it's a letter from DJ Zorn and maybe Melissa, you could read it to the board?
Sure. Um, this looks from DJ Jordan, the Fire Marshal, and it was dated June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty three. Hello, Bill. In an effort to prevent or minimize any surprises, I wanted to take a minute to discuss the new process for fireworks. At the August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty two town council meeting, the town council voted to approve the Fire Department and Fire Marshal's Office fee schedule. This was mainly to incorporate both offices fees into the town fee schedule. As such, a two hundred dollar permit fee will be due at the time of application for a fireworks or special offense permit. Secondly, in accordance with the Connecticut regulations regarding the sale, use, transportation, and storage of fireworks, twenty nine dash three five seven dot one through twenty nine dash five seven dash twenty three A, Fire Department personnel shall remain on duty from that time that the fireworks are delivered to the display site until termination of display and removal of all fireworks and debris from the site. This function is commonly referred to as a fire watch. The fire watch fee, which is paid for by the applicant, is fifty dollars per person per hour, along with any standby cost for fire apparatus. The staffing of the fire watch is at the discretion of the fire chief. I believe that today is thirty days from the event and permits must be submitted to the state at least fifteen days prior to the date of display. The permit does have to go through internal officials, police, fire marshal, town manager, prior to submission to the state of Connecticut. My office and the Fire Department are ready to help ensure another safe event. If there is anything that we can do to help or questions that need to be answered, please let me know. Respectfully, DJ Douglas J. Jordan, Fire Marshal, Emergency Management Director for the Town of Newington.
Hmm.
So, Bill, is this a permit fee to the town of Newington?
Yeah.
That you're paying?
Yes.
Could be sellers or? This isn't like a step back.
Yes.
Yes, so there's not a lot of cooperation interdepartmentally, that's for sure. They always seem to come for us money no matter what, what it is. So I, I talked to Bill, I didn't have the letter, but I talked to Bill about this. And Jay, both. And I, I have a response. I'm not sure where the response will go. But if you want me to read, I'll, I'll read it. Anyone has the other comment, certainly don't hesitate to add it. Here, Mr. Zorden, the Newington Park Recreation Board discussed your email dated June sixteenth, twenty twenty three, that was sent to William De Mayo. The board discussed your new fireworks fee policy at the board meeting on Tuesday, June twentieth, twenty twenty three. The Newington Parks and Recre- the Newington Parks and Recreation Board is disappointed that you made a recommendation to charge a fellow department additional fees for the community-wide fireworks display. As you know, it takes a massive effort by the Parks and Recreation staff and board members to raise twenty eight thousand dollars to purchase the fireworks. An additional two hundred on top of the fifty per hour standby costs just reduces the amount of fireworks we can purchase from the residents of town. For budgeting purposes, please provide us a written estimate as to the number of fire personnel that will be assigned to the event and the total cost we should expect. The board is unaccustomed to the idea of charging. Board is unaccustomed for charging services rendered to the fellow departments. It is our understanding that Parks and Recreation Department was not charged, has not charged you or the Fire Department for one wailing over nine hundred in fees for two blood drives that you organized in January and May of twenty twenty three at the Mortensen Community Center, the yearly manicuring of lawns, cutting trees, mulching, snow removal for all five houses. The board would like to pursue a fee waiver for the fireworks display since it is a town-wide event. We all need to be sensitive that the fireworks display has a positive economic impact on town businesses such as restaurants, bars, gas stations, convenience stores, and more. Please forward a fee, a fee waiver request to be completed and submitted to you. Sincerely, Jay and myself.
Yep.
So.
That's right to your point.
I mean, buddy wants. I, do we have to vote on this, Bill?
I think it, it, under new business, if, if the board all agreed with that, you would vote on it to send it as a board because you two would be representing the board. Similar to what we did for, similar to what we did for the pool.
That went well.
I think that maybe, yeah, um, something could be added on it. It's very short notice, you know, as it is.
Yeah, we were unaware. This took place, the fee took place in August of twenty twenty two. And you're just hearing about it now, is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
But the fee was enacted by the twenty twenty two, honestly.
And what we would, just so you know, also, I was thinking about this all day. And I, I was thinking that we already signed the contract for the fireworks for the twenties, whatever it is, twenty seven, five plus the permitting fees. So we would have to make adjustments in the carnival money or the food truck money or something to, to make this work also. It's, it's not, you know, it's not the end of the world of, you know, paying fourteen hundred bucks maybe and another two hundred, sixteen hundred bucks, but, you know, every time you, somebody takes money from the, the fund, it's, it becomes a smaller show and, and people in New England are accustomed to great shows. So, and we try to get every year for eight years now, we've been increasing it by roughly about five hundred dollars to a thousand dollars to make it, to be able to say it's a bigger and better show. That's, that was a nice letter, Don. Nice letter.
Do you have any idea how it aimed at console? Was it him that decided to go for a permit fee?
I, I don't know, but he said that he went in front of the council in August, so I'm, I'm assuming he was the staff person that made the recommendation. But I, I don't know for sure.
Who would have proposed it, though? Was it?
Yeah, actually, the market.
Yeah. Was that just a staff, his staff decision? Saying that, hey, look, we have to go through whatever permitting process that is worth two hundred bucks? Or did the Fire Department itself, the fire commissioners make that suggestion or who knows?
Yeah, I, I really don't know the answer to that. Is, this is kind of a, it's been, it was a shock to me when I saw it a couple of days ago.
Right, so back in August of twenty twenty two, no one notified you of this potential change?
No.
Yeah.
The other thing I would think that maybe you could add in that is please remember that we are all working together to build a stronger community.
Yeah.
You know?
Yep.
That's like, really, you know, that's.
That doesn't give any detail as to, yeah, they're gonna have a truck. Is it gonna be four guys or is it four hours an hour? For ten hours, all the game is having a cookout? And what is there involved, like not walking around the park because they're gonna be responsible for the protection of fire?
Yeah.
Fire.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, the fireworks normally arrive about nine o'clock in the morning and the guy, the shooter usually leaves at about eleven, so you're talking a fourteen hours and you know, some years it's been one or two people on staff and some years it's been more. So I, you know, I'm, I'm, I have a little anxiety over how many are going to be. I thought about that all day today, too, going, I wonder how many they're gonna assign.
Well, it doesn't say because it, it only says the apparatus and.
And it's.
If you're gonna send an apparatus somewhere, you gotta have a full crew on it.
And, yeah, and it's at, it's at the chief's discretion, so, um.
Be a guard.
Do you think some of that depends on the weather that if, you know, the grass was really dry or something, if it been really dry and I don't, that they want more people then there and then if it was wet and mushy or something?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Yeah.
Yeah, but at the end of the day, it doesn't matter what the conditions are. The fire chief says, hey, we need fifteen people out there, even though it's wet, it's still gonna be.
So, well, what you're trying to tell me is we don't know who sets the amount of firemen are gonna be there. Like you say, it could be three, four, ten.
Is it worth reaching out to Chief Traver and have a conversation? I'm sure he's aware of some of this, but he may not be aware of our end and our concerns. Maybe he can minimize the damage, so to speak.
Yeah, I think this, if, if you elect to send this letter, I think it's gonna get a conversation off dead center, that's for sure. But, yeah. I think, yeah, I think if, if, if you guys support the, uh, you know, the uncomfortable feeling, I guess, is what it, it is, or the disappointment, whatever you wanna call it. We could send the letter and then have a conversation and see with both DJ and the chief and find out what are they thinking, you know, what is, why are they, why are they going this route?
Well, back, back to Billy's, uh, point. I would like to know how many firemen are gonna be here. You know, is it four, five, six, seven?
Yep, I know, and.
Oh, I mean.
Doesn't have.
Let's, let's see what the number is gonna be, the amount of firemen. How do they pick on the numbers?
Yeah, I don't think we have to get overly excited about, I don't think we have to get overly excited about it, but I know you guys volunteer your time at the Pier Garden in the ticket booth and you, you all donate thirty five hours of time. It, it, it's hurtful, you know, to, and we're begging companies to, to raise money. They're not giving us money to, to pay for, you know, the, our own departments, uh, helping us out to put on a fireworks show. They're put, they wanna put on the best show for the Newington residents also, I think. But, yeah, it's not the end of the world. I just think it's something that you guys should, should be aware of. Um, it was kind of a shocker to us when we, we read it.
I thought when, um, fire was called that the firefighters got paid twenty dollars an hour when they got called to a fire. So why would they be getting paid fifty dollars an hour?
Yeah, they have, they have different levels of call thing.
Yeah, but a regular call is twenty bucks, that's, they have no fire over there. I suppose there's a potential, but, you know, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but this is a fireworks display. It runs a potential risk of explosions.
Oh, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, I, I really, for the record, I don't know how fire departments operate. I really don't. I just, I know that we struggle to raise money. We, we don't have one donation, uh, for, from a resident for in Newington for fireworks this year. Just to let you know. So the only money we're, we're, the only way we're making this twenty eight thousand dollars is through these special events like Food Truck Friday and, um, the Newington Ghost Country and those kinds of things. So it's, it's very, it's very difficult to raise large amounts of money. I don't know if people realize that or not. It's, it's not easy.
Well, I think it's the same story. Most people think it's taxpayer dollars. Most people don't realize or understand or care to know where the money comes from. They just assume it's in their tax base. If that's it, you know?
Yes, yeah, that's, that's true. That, that's a true statement. I've been, I've been trying to educate people for eight years about that, how we don't get money in taxpayers for our staff. We pay for our staff, we pay for their benefits on the Recreation Division and that's, and it's two, we have to raise about two million dollars a year and that's, it's crazy.
But how many people, how many people in town know that bill? Very, very few.
Yeah, very few.
I, like you said, everybody thinks it's tax-based and it's not. We know it, we know it.
Yeah, the Parks Division, the Parks and Cemeteries Divisions are funded through the, well, the Parks Division is funded through the park, through taxes. And the cemetery is pretty much operated quasi like a business. So, so, you know, we have fees that we charge to, for burials and, and that kind of thing, and that goes into a perpetual care fund so that once the cemetery is full for the, in perpetuity, the, the Parks Division will, or, uh, whatever, will, the town will be able to maintain the grounds. So that's the thinking behind it. And that's in a successful, um, it's in a successful business model right now. We're, we're doing well. So, yeah, I would, I would say that under new business, you could, if, if you so desired, you could agree to send a letter like Don, you know, Don could give it to Melissa and then add, um, Eileen's idea at the end, uh, we're trying to build a strong community and send it and that'll get us off dead center. The bottom line is, we're gonna have a fireworks show no matter what. Um, so we just want people to be sensitized, I let, I guess, to the idea or understand that every time there's a fee attached, it costs the, the ta- the taxpayers, the residents of Newington, you know, part of the show.
Yeah, and if we did charge the nine hundred bucks or whatever that fee would be for the Mortensen Center, that's pretty much a negate or most of the fee they're gonna charge us. So I don't understand why it can't be like a, well, you know, we waive those fees, why can't they waive their fees?
Well, yeah, you know what it costs to plow snow, right? We do every, every firehouse parking lot, every snowstorm. So, you know, you can't even, it's, there's no equality there. We're, we're, we're providing much more ser- much more cost of services than, than their small amount that they're charging us.
We don't waive their fees.
I, I just have one other question, Bill, let me take that. If they're out there doing the fireworks and there's a fire call, they do not respond, is that correct?
You, you know, again, Jay, I don't, I, I don't wanna answer. I don't know anything about how the Fire Department operates. I really don't. So.
They wouldn't leave.
Yeah, I know. How could they?
Hmm.
On the warehouse, right? Back to. Or all of them. We could, we could get prices, though, man, we can get, don't do it. We brought up.
Well, I'd like to re- motion that, um, the letter from Don and, uh, Jay be sent to Mr. Zorden on behalf of the board expressing our dismay over the, the schedule for the fireworks.
Second.
Well, the only thing I would say, I'm gonna take a vote on this, is that at least we should get a response. Some kind of response. I mean, you know.
I think they have to.
Yeah.
It might be not.
Is there a request for a fee waiver inside of the letter?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor of, uh, sending the letter?
Aye.
Opposed? Send the letter. We'll get in trouble, Don. Tim, is yours next?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet. It's all the reports, right? You'll be, we're in business, we're in business, we're in business. We're, cause there is.
There is no.
Oh, I thought we did that. We started to, then we backtracked.
Well, three, four, three, uh.
I don't think, yeah.
I'm, I'm true.
When they picked up ranching.
Yes, picked up ranches, that's about it, right, Bill? I'm turning around and speeding quick.
We're losing control, Jay.
I know.
Yeah.
Who cares? Okay, business. At Beaver Site Research.
Didn't I do that once before?
No, this is, this is a different group and.
No, I did, did the research, wait, we're still here, I'm pretty sure. That's how we found out about the ice creams.
Oh.
Yeah. Wetlands, like the Merciers, yeah.
Yeah, so, so this, this is a different student, different group, but anyway, the reason why I bring it to your attention is because they wanna, they wanna fly a drone. And as many, as many of you know, drones need to be approved by the Parks and Recreation Commission when anytime there's of, something of flight over the park system such as a model rocket, air, you know, the latest boat you did was a model rocket display that we did for the after-school program at Mill Pond Park. I just wanted to, I'm perfectly fine with doing this and I believe he's gonna have all the FCC requirements to fly a drone, but I didn't wanna bring it to your attention. You also gave me permission to have six, uh, flights a- approved by myself and then come to you later, but this, this, um, the timing worked out where I could bring it to you ahead of time. So, um, I thought that you guys could give it a, give it a nod, take a look at it. We think it's okay.
Okay, we've got a motion here. Don, you wanna take a shot at us?
There. Like, I might take a motion to allow Evan Azaco, a graduate student from the University of Connecticut, to conduct a Beaver research. The research will take place at the space between the Plamenirre Recreation Complex and Churchill Park, the newest properly registered drone and licensed pilot.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Hey, Bill, I have a question. No, not, nothing to do with that, but going back to permit. But you said you had the rockets fired in the park. Will that require a permit in the future if this, if this thing hold?
Oh, well, the rockets, there were model rockets, um, I, I don't think that's a fireworks display.
Okay.
And we don't do permits, yeah.
Uh. Okay, where are we? Okay, you're on the one ninety. Water Lantern State Liquor Permit.
Yep, this is just a request, um, to the board, uh, having our Nancy Glenn apply for the state liquor elections like we've done in the past for the Water Lantern Festival so we could sell, um, alcoholic beverages and, uh, use it as a fundraiser for the fireworks.
Okay. Any questions on that, Bill? You wanna, will you shout it? But you fight it?
Yeah.
That, that page, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the Parker Rick administration to apply for the state liquor program for the Water Lantern Festival held at Mill Pond Park on September ninth, twenty twenty three, and authorize them to sell liquor, beer, and wine as fundraiser for fireworks.
Second.
Then, any questions? All in favor? Uh, opposed? Motion passes.
And, and if I may, Mister Chairman, just for everyone's edification and those people that are watching on TV, um, it was brought to our attention that a- about using more safety precautions when doing the beer and wine. As you know, we already get the KERMA insurance, uh, we add on to the regular towns insurance and we go through most proper protocols, but in studying it, we added two more precautions and that was a tips program, which is you take it online and the people that take it, it's a three-hour class, I guess, and you take a little test after the video. And it, it aware, it makes the, the people that pour beer and wine more savvy and more educated on how, if there's any drunks or drunk, this is to prevent drunk driving. And in addition, uh, Roderick went out and we researched a whole bunch of places and we've got, uh, two hundred dollar gift certificates in twenty-dollar denominations to Uber so that if we identify someone that's drunk that drove to the park, um, that we would offer them a free ride home to make it even more safe and they could pick up their car tomorrow. So we haven't, knock on wood, we haven't had that in the, the, since, I guess, as far as I know, since nineteen eighty-one when we started selling beer and wine at the Cheviganza. But, um, you can never be too safe. And just for everyone's record, I wanna thank Eileen Frankolino, she took the, the test, um, Hadil took it, Roderick took it, Nancy took it, Tony Palomino took it, Nancy, uh, Carolinist and Diana are in the process of taking it. And I, I think that's everybody. I'm not positive.
No, Betty, she took it, Kim.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Betsy, uh, Eileen's daughter, yep. So, a- and I'm thankful to those people do, doing the extra effort and listen, you know, public safety is our big deal, right? We're, we want people to have good family fun, but we don't want anybody to get hurt. So I wanted to bring that to your attention because that was new to our protocols, uh, just as of late, lately. And I wanna thank the people that brought it to my attention, um, to be more, uh, more savvy about it and I, I appreciate that very much.
Okay, go ahead, Jay. Tim?
Yes.
Tim's on stage here.
I'm on stage. Thank you very much, Mister Chairman. Bill, if you wanna jump in at any point? So I had an idea the other night and I talked with Bill, this meeting about it on Saturday nights here for July and August, where there's a concert series, five to eight o'clock. Find a way to promote our businesses in downtown and center here. So I went to Bill with an idea of approaching three businesses, uh, PJ's Rooster, El Pollo Guapo, to get some kind of deal, make a coupon and a staff member could hand it out. So when people come to the concerts, they can go grab food, take out, bring it back, enjoy the concert. Uh, Bill, if you wanna say anything, I think it then morphed to, since it's the end of June right now, I'm starting late, maybe we promote something virtual. I'm starting late, maybe we promote something for July, send a blast out to. These restaurants, businesses, and then so for August. They can do it. So. Or I wanted to come to the board and get, God bless everyone, because I, I want to volunteer to do this. To reach out to these businesses, but I just, before I did anything, I want to bring this up and see if this is okay, that I can put down this.
What are you proposing, like a discount coupon or a paid spot that advertised that we could send out to TJ's and?
Anything, something. I, I feel like when people go, we have a lot of people out of town, they might not know. That there's TJ's, there's restaurants and that you don't have to bring food, they can call them, grab food. Or our businesses here.
So just, just sponsor advertisement.
Yeah. Or they could just go to the place and say, I'm here and then, you know, maybe just get fifteen. I, I want to contact them and see. What, what they're willing to do.
You probably need the band to do something like, or band is to say, hey, you can. Get takeout at these restaurants today or, or next week. It's Subway and something else. Something else, correct?
I think Tim, when Tim and I talked and I have a couple more ideas came to mind. One, we thought not handing out coupons because that, a lot of people throw them on the ground and it'll become a parks. Problem for the parking lot. So what we thought was we'd go to like an image ink and get those sign. Uh, those signs that are two by three that stick in the ground. It would say, you know, uh, restaurant sponsors. Or downtown local businesses and each corner of the thing and Hadil, take notice because I'm gonna ask you to do it. We would do like, say of a free ice cream, if you buy one ice cream, would be in the corner of Carvel's and then. Um, Steve's place would be buy one grinder, get one free or get ten percent off any order or whatever. The one thing I did think about Tim was that you don't want businesses to be upset. So I think we. We might have to send out a social media blast that says any business that wants to participate. Because if you, if you just mentioned those three, I think we're opening ourselves up to people that would be upset with us because they'd say, why didn't you ask me to do it? Um, so I think we would start off with social media saying, hey, any restaurants interested? In addition to whoever you get, Tim. And then we, uh, we, we go from there and, and do it for the four Saturdays or five Saturdays, whatever there are in August. And see how it works as an experiment.
We try a race board and you can just add people in if they decide to do it.
Any other discussion?
When, when are you gonna be reaching out to people?
July, July?
Soon as possible, yeah, actually, yeah, for July.
Yeah, probably the first, I would say, Tim, by the first two weeks of July, we'd have to have a deadline. And Hadil could put that in, in the news release. In the social media thing saying, because we need to print up the signs and we need to get Iraq together to see what the deal is. Then we need to notify the bands that are playing so that they hit it on their website. And we hit it on ours. So, yeah, I think give us a little breathing room for two weeks.
Maybe like the Tuesday before the extravaganza.
Yeah, see, yeah, save by the, the, the eleventh of July.
Okay.
Yep. Hadil, can you hear me? Are you there?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I'm ready to sound.
Okay, I wasn't sure if you fell asleep on me. I, no.
You better stay in Massachusetts.
Don't say that twice.
Any other questions for Tim? What do you want, what do you want, you want to put in a motion, Tim, or?
Yeah, um, I'd like to make a motion, um. To do an advertisement for the August concert series at the municipal park. For business to promote, uh, businesses to do.
Second, all in favor? Oppose? Okay, Tim, you're on. You can get to work. Okay, now we're on reports, uh, Billy.
Okay.
Thank you volunteer for June eighth and nine.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everyone for, um, all their help in doing that because. We just, we wouldn't make the money we make without it. And then now I'll turn over the, the financial report over to Hadil and she'll. Give you the numbers.
Special event report, same thing, same, same two days. Kindness counts.
Yes, so the totals, um, from the beer garden, the, um, cash and card concessions and pain. What for both days was seven thousand three hundred and seventy-six. Um, if you guys look at the board, you'll see, um, the credit card sales, which is really nice to have. This is the first year that we did have our credit card. In the beer garden, um, and it did make a difference. Um, our food truck total was three thousand one hundred dollars and that's thanks to Nancy. We had, uh, twenty-four food trucks. And the wine slushies, um, brought in five hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents. Um, and then you also see the sponsors and how much they donated. Um, and then you have the expenses down below in the, uh, bottom left. Um, so with our total with the sponsors is seventeen thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven after taking out all of our paid expenses, which were a total of. Eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars. We have a net total of eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight for both events.
Nice.
Nice.
Previous year, you know, off the top of your head.
So, um, previously we did better, but that was also because we were fighting air quality along with. The weather, the on and off rain. Uh, but despite those two things, I think that we did, you know, really well. I mean. Nine thousand dollars in two days, that's. Great amount. So thank you to sponsors, especially for.
If, if I could add in, um, to support Hadil, the motorcycle madness wasn't. We didn't do it, we didn't do it this year. So when we compared the beer sales. We were just a little off, uh, compared to last year, if that helps you, Don.
Okay, no, I'm just curious.
Okay, how about the kindness counts now?
Uh, we're up to over three hundred, I think three hundred and fourteen people have kindness count signs in their houses. And if they're watching on TV, remember to come Thursday night promptly at six, so come at quarter of six. To Mill Pond Park, bring your sign and your steak back. We'll take a giant picture with everyone. And then they, they all become participants of the BYOC, bring your own cheese. They bring their cheese, we give them a free glass of wine. So that's all, that's all sponsored by Happy Harry's Wine and Liquor on the Berlin Turnpike. Thank you, Kamal, for, uh, your generosity.
Okay, uh, summer camp update.
I'm gonna turn that over to a very proud Hadil.
I am a very proud, uh, summer camp supervisor. So, um, but, uh, our first day was yesterday. Um, and right now I took our registration. We are at five hundred and fifty-nine campers. Um, for all, uh, for both sites, for K one through entering grades eight. Um, every week we are doing field trips and special guests along with either, uh, Pizza Fridays or Cookout Friday. Since the second year, we're doing that. Um, every day we have activities for the kids. The kids get free swim and swimming lessons. Um, and these past two days have been quiet in the office. It has been running like a. Like machine. It's been beautiful. Parents are happy. We've gotten nothing but compliments from both campers and parents. Um, and we've also utilized like an online quote unquote bible for kids to be able to check parents in and out because we are. Basically fully online for registrations this year as opposed to the half and half. So we made this Google Doc where, um, the kids will have all the information right available to them as soon as parents can come in. That includes the pickup authorizations, any, um, medical needs the children has, emergency contacts. Um, and anything else that we need.
And had my, uh, so started summer sunshine camp today. We loved it. Said it was great, some Mexican friends, the teacher, you know, last year, excited to go back. So even the little kids are having fun and enjoying themselves.
In, in those numbers, for so- summer sunshine isn't even part of the camp that numbers that Hadil mentioned. So. We have the largest numbers ever, um, most, most income ever received. And it's just so proud of Hadil's preparation, the planning for the last six months or eight months. And, uh, hiring good quality staff, our high school and college kids in New England are, you know, they're, it was very competitive to get a job this year. Uh, fielded, fielded a lot of up, upset, uh, parents that their kid didn't get a job, but. Um, you know, there's always next year and there's always the LIT program where they can learn how, leadership and training program where they can learn how to. Fill out applications, how to, how to interview, how to prepare yourself for your first job. Um, that's what most of this whole thing is. It's an education process that we help, uh, help young people. Uh, develop their skills to become, you know, productive citizens when they get out of high school. So, uh. Congrats to Hadil and her staff. Um, we're so happy and thankful. We did a little study. We, we're, we have over thirty-five percent of all school age kids that are qualified for our summer camp. Every thirty-five percent of the kids from school are in our summer camp, if you can imagine that. So from seven thirty in the morning till five thirty at night, five days a week. That's, that's incredible. So, uh, kudos to Hadil. Nice job.
It has capacity. I mean, how much more can we grow?
That's it.
Our K one, two, three, and four, five, um, sites have, um, a lot of the weeks are reaching, uh, our caps up. So, um, something to think about is maybe switching around the sites, which grades are where. Um, things like that, Krista, I and Gillian have already begun talking about it, how we move the kids around, be able to let more kids, um, join in. Um, but I think parents really, um, are just the way we advertise it and the way, the word of mouth that we've been posting, um. The field trips earlier on, so parents know what to register before, before previous years. They don't know what field trips they have, what the theme weeks are. So now that they know, they know what to sign up for. So get parents excited and, um, they see our camp. We have a no screen policy and the fact that their kids are going out and having fun from seven thirty AM, five thirty without a screen. Is something parents really look forward to and, um, have noticed changes in their kids, like social and like personal scale with them.
Yeah, no, it's a great program. Always has been.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have to, uh, we're gonna have to really watch what legislators do at the state level. In regards to summer camp and making municipalities become licensed by the Department of Early Childhood. That will, that'll throw a big, uh, curve ball to every town, one hundred and sixty-nine towns in this state. So we'll see what happens. They're pretty committed to doing it and it's really not. Uh, it appears, it, let's, let's put it this way. It appears that there's some legislators that are on boards of private camps. And they want to make it more beneficial for the private camps to have, um, more people to sign up at their programs. So.
It's always money.
Bucks, that's the name of the game.
So we, uh, follow the dollar, right?
Next item is the aquatics update, uh, Bill.
Yeah, you know how important we think it's, it is to have swim lessons. Well, swim lessons, private and, and semi-private filled up in. I think the first couple of days of registration. Everything else is filling up, um, doing well at both pools. Both mornings and evenings, uh, which is pretty impressive. We're doing the four thirty and five thirty classes. Um, we still have the senior citizens swimming at twelve noon at mill. So we're, um, we're, we're pretty packed and we're teaching kids how to swim and they're getting a recreational swim in the afternoon. Uh, so it's, it's nice. It's, it's really, uh, if, it's a one hundred percent camp, right? They get experiences of all types from the field trips to swim lessons, to recreational swim. To, to clowns and magicians and book readers and librarians and cultural arts. Uh, they're getting a little, little. Introduce, introduction to everything. So it's nice and I'm happy, Tim, to hear that Noah is having a good time at, at the preschool. A little plug for them. We've got, I, I'd like to put those preschool teachers up against anybody. Uh, we have a grandmother that's one of our staff members. She has two master's degree in early childhood. So. That's the quality of people that we have teaching, um, and we're, we're really pleased with that. And, oh, and Nancy, Nancy and Jessica Fend- uh, Jessica Fendelson, she got married. It's, uh, Coilo or something like that. And, uh, both of them, we sent them to college, to Charter Oak College, and they both got As in their. Uh, preschool administrative college class. So they got three credits that we paid for it and. That now they have, uh, that type of background for their, for, for, in their experiences. They add their experiences to their, their formal education and we got a dynamo crew over there.
No issues with pools, right? Good shape?
The pools are, are in the, not good shape. No, I'm gonna say they're open. The, the pools are open. The waiting pool at Churchill is not open. We're still waiting for, uh, a, a stretch of three days of good weather and we can finally paint it up. Um, but yeah, we're, we're doing well so far. Let's knock on wood. We're doing good and, um. You know, that's, nothing would surprise me, uh, down the road, but we're, we painted both pools, uh. So that's, that's a good thing. That helps in minimizing. The, the water leakage, uh, to some degree, not, not everything, but it does help, uh, fill in some of the holes of the concrete.
Bill, maybe this is not for us before bed. Uh, what's the, I know the high school pool was out for a while. Has that been fixed?
Yeah, there. Yes, I was just over in the pool house, uh, uh, the pool garage. Uh, for another reason, I'm trying to, uh, make him out. I'm trying to fix the underground irrigation at the high school. It's. About thirty-five years old. It's guaranteed for twenty-five years, twenty years, actually. So, um. At, at the same time, I was talking to the custodians over there and it appears that they got the piece back in and they were just. Uh, j- juggling the water, uh, to, around to try to make it available to us. Cause we use it when there's thunder and lightning and rain. At Churchill Park. We bust the kids over to the high school and they predominantly use the cafeteria, the gym and the, the pool. So it should be fixed.
Excellent. Next item, Eagle Park Handicap Accessibility Walking Path and Pickleball Court.
Yep, so as you probably know, if you've been up to Eagle Park, the milling was done by Cedar Ridge Construction. The Public Works, uh, uh, Highway Division is gonna be paving it and putting a little bit of drainage in. And Cedar Ridge Construction just built the, uh, first pickleball court at Eagle Park and they straw, uh, grass seeded around the edges. We just got the net and post delivered to us, but we're not gonna put them up until, uh, we're, we need three, three more weeks. For the oil and the asphalt to be, uh, rate, rise to the top through the sunlight. And then once that dries out, we are gonna have Hinding Tennis come in and, and paint it. So I would say like by the first or second week of July, we should have a usable pickleball court at Eagle Park and I think that'll be nice. And the playground has been ordered and probably will be installed around March. It's a seven to eight month waiting time now to, to order a playground. It's unbelievable. I, I think they use COVID as an, as an excuse, but whatever, can't fight, can't fight with it.
Sounds good. Eagle Park and Seymour Park repainting of the basketball court.
Yep, when, when Hinding Tennis comes, the plan is to do repaint the basketball court in Eagle Park so then that, everything will be a spanking brand new look. And then do Seymour Park Basketball Court, recote that. And, um, and do the pickleball court. So those three in one shot. And that was, uh, last year's CIP money.
Next item is Candlewick Park. After brawl court and handicap accessibility.
Yep, we're gonna, uh, Cedar Ridge Construction's going to redo the basketball court. And again, with, with his generosity for the same price, he's gonna do the pave, uh, the path to make it handicap accessible. There was a path. Apparently a path there, kind of overgrown with grass as it's been not, uh, I don't know, just in disrepair. So anyways. We're gonna fix it and, uh, we'll have a nice entrance to the basketball court. And that'll be a, a nice addition to that side of the, of the Berlin Turnpike.
What's your usability in that park?
You know, I, I mean, I'm not there, I'm not there all the time, but on nights and weekends, there's, there's usually kids or a father with kids. Shooting baskets. So, um, not giant games or anything, but I, I see people using it.
All right, I just wanna.
Yep.
Make sure that, you know, if you're gonna work on it, it's, it's used.
Yep.
You know, not just. I know before it was grounded and every other thing.
Yep, for sure.
Okay. Next, the last item is the extravaganza report.
Hmm, um, I, I'm surprised I didn't put artificial turf on there for, uh, report. If, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, could I just? Say a few words about artificial, yeah, um, just so the board knows. You know that I was, I'm, I'm very apprehensive about contractors finishing what they, on top, starting on time and ending on time. But, um, field turf, which is. But um field turf, which is a nationwide company course and they they do all the big football fields, like the Giants Stadium and Foxborough and blah, 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 in most colleges. Anyways, we got them under the state bid and they came a week early. They ripped up, they brought five guys with specialized equipment, they ripped up the artificial turf in really a day and a half. Um they brought in uh a landscaper uh for fine grading and added a little bit of top process. And we're accepting the rolls of plastic grass was made in Georgia, delivered to Pennsylvania. And about now should be being dropped off at at um Clem Lemire. And I'll have, I've got my landscape architect, um SMRT out of New Hampshire coming in at seven thirty tomorrow morning to give it its preliminary approval to lay the plastic down. They plan on putting, completing the the plastic grass Wednesday and Thursday. And then maybe another two weeks of sewing in all the small lines such as hash marks and um small uh in small circles and curves. So I'm tickled pink so far of how things are going. And it's gonna be a beautiful, beautiful final project and um so pleased with everybody that we're working with of how it's going. So um it's it it's an interesting process that that field turf is unbelievable. They sucked up, they have a machine that sucks up all the sand and and rubber, throws it on a conveyor belt. It shakes, it separates the rubber from the sand, and then they have these giant hefty garbage bags that are about twelve feet by twelve feet. And there must be, I don't know, fifteen of them there. And they load them with with uh forklifts onto a big flatbed and they take them out of there. And part of our deal is that they recycle every part of the whole thing. They recycle the rubber, the sand, and the, they grind up the plastic grass and they make clothes out of it and all bottles and all kinds of things. So um they're finding a repurpose to it and uh I couldn't say enough good about field turf right now. And hopefully that continues through the process.
What was the bottom line? Do you have it?
Uh approximately six fifty, six seventy-five, something like that, and it might be a little less. I I put in a contingency for broken concrete around the edges and that still is is to be determined tomorrow morning. And also, if I don't know how much extra process they put down, two, two truckloads were included in the price. If it was more than that, it was gonna be a little bit, so uh the answer is approximately six fifty to six seventy-five.
Good, that's, that's about a hundred thousand over than we thought, right?
Uh, no, it's just
Can we figure about seven fifty?
Oh, yeah, um at one time we did, but we we got the state bid, so um that was a help, that was a help to us, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Are you done?
I'm done, thanks, I got, it's just the extravaganza. Yeah, now I'm going back on. Um the extravaganza, I just wanna let everyone know, if you wanna sign up to be a ticket selling uh tickets or wristbands. Uh we really could use your help, appreciate it. I don't know, Melissa, if you have a signup sheet or not?
No, but um I can certainly get that out, I'm off tomorrow, but I could send something out on Thursday, an email.
Okay. Okay, so if you could mention that to Roderick, um he could he could keep track of that. Um but anybody that wants to work, like say from, we open up at five o'clock, like four thirty, if you could work four thirty to uh when when we go to ten o'clock, so it was four thirty-five, three, six, three, seven thirty, something like four thirty to seven thirty or seven. And then the next shift at seven thirty to ten, um we re- really appreciate that, that's July twelfth, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. And also, we need help for the uh beer and wine gardens too, that will be open the same time. I know Tony, Diana, and Carol will probably commit to selling the beer and wine, so that'll be helpful. But uh certainly, we could use your help in the craft beer tickets, please, please, please try to sell them. Don Woods gets an A plus for selling the first twenty um right away, so thank you, Don. Uh I had a, I don't know, Melissa, did Bob Rizzo pick up twenty-five tickets?
Not that I'm aware of, I know we have that envelope for him, but I I didn't see him today.
Okay, I saw Bob Rizzo, for those of you know him, he lives on Audubon, he offered to sell, try to sell twenty-five tickets for craft beer. Um we're doing all kinds of things to try to get craft beer donated, cause the more that gets donated, the more profit we make. It's our biggest fundraiser um for all the events we do. We could, we could potentially make seventy-five hundred dollars and up as far as profit goes, uh the way we've got it designed. So hopefully you guys can help sell tickets and tell people about it. And we've got stuff out on the internet and social media and you can, it's easy and it's only twenty-five dollars now and forty dollars at the door. Uh and everything else in the extravaganza is scheduled, we've got a new, uh two new sponsors to my now, uh three. Cedar Ridge Construction, um we've got Dominic Payne's Enterprise is gonna do um Cupcake Kickoff on Wednesday night. That's new and Vinnie Bonavita's uh Porta Potty Company is going to sponsor an event on uh thir- Thursday night, so let's drop a postpin in a jar and get a free ice cream or a free beer or wine. So we get, we get some neat, neat things happening, plus all the fun things that we did last year, uh so that's all good news. So the extravaganza's coming together nicely.
Bill, I have a question, I have, I know I have a stack here for the craft beer night. Can you, we only accept cash from, can you pay with credit card for these tickets?
Yes, we could do credit cards if you wanna bring it into the office, or they could do it online, um that's easy too.
Is there any way we can promote that? Because not a lot of people carry cash, I might, I might be the credit card guy now, but not a lot of people carry cash. If people knew that, maybe you'd get more for buying it.
Yep, everything, eh eh all individual sales, we probably have maybe ten today. Uh they've all used their credit cards, everything we say is either, you know, on credit card availability online and we give them the the website to click on the link, so it goes right to the point of sales and bang right in, it's pretty simple.
Okay.
Yep.
First thing, just to increase sales, maybe.
Yeah, and and I should, I should recognize, I should recognize uh Tim also, Tim and and our former commissioner, um Joe. Wow, how we, how quick, how quickly we forget, the body's not even cold yet, right? Tom and, Tom and Tim uh Frontier came through it again and they provided, as Hadeel uh noted noted in her report that we did get credit cards, we do have uh wifi available to us, we have all the latest and greatest technology, works like a charm. And we estimate, or they estimated, they're giving us probably nine thousand and change in in-kind services for the two months of June and July, uh and that really is a a credit to Tim and Tom. So thankful for that and that really um giant, giant help to us. And it really showed, you know, IT worked with us and Hadeel and and Steve Tofeld and Clay, everybody. You know, everybody worked hard on it and it worked out really nicely.
Yeah, I think if more, oh, I didn't carry cash, so more people know they can just print plastic, a credit card. Can I should be better this year, Bill, and uh, yeah, they can build at work at the beer?
Yes, um, yeah, no, I did assume to have a problem with all the credit cards were great and they'll have both iPads up and running for that, so.
My guy Frontier, I told him the issue we had, the beer garden thing, and he said, not a problem. The only issue
I don't think I heard that, I I didn't hear what you said, if it
I said, I was gonna say, the only issue we had on the beer events on Thursday, Friday and June eighth, ninth was the compressor was all on one side of our electrical panel out there. And I was told it's two one hundred amp services, so we don't have to plug everything on one side, just put it on the other side and it never had a problem. So that happens again, just switch sides.
Okay, all right. Billy, maybe, Billy, maybe you could tell Steve Tofeld, explain that to him.
Uh yeah, he and I spoke, that's what we determined, that was, I don't know why, way it was, but I'll definitely reach out again.
Excellent, good, good, good. All right, and uh Sam, you have a Facebook Live that we did for um Craft Beer Night?
Yes, I'll play that, if you don't hear it, Bill, I'm sure it's playing and we can hear it here, sometimes there's an issue with the audio for people on Zoom. But I'm gonna play.
I do not hear it if you're, if you can hear me. Let's see, can you hear me? Okay. Is it over?
Uh, yeah, yeah, you're giving a speech, you know how that goes.
All right.
Tom, my board members?
Yeah, I do have one, hey Bill, some friends of ours decided to take their new pup for a walk uh from the Bob Stanley Trail and regretted every second of it. The dog came out covered in ticks, they said it's totally overgrown, a shambles. I I did not walk it, so has anyone looked at that recently or any plans to look at it? Which hill is this? Bob Stanley, uh Churchill to
Churchill there, bundle beer.
Yeah, actually, yeah, I think we're, we're gonna send Yeah, we're gonna send our guys through there again, um I think July or August, when this grass starts to slow down. And the Girl Scouts just supposedly just did a new Bob Stanley sign on the Little League side of things. They painted it, they asked to paint it high school blue, I think. So they, that was upgraded and then another scout group redid the Bob Stanley entrance. So I will ask Clay uh to take a peek at the inside and see if we can run through it.
Pretty bad.
Um Bill, I just had one other question, um there was some little bit of kerfuffle online on Facebook about uh whether or not you could buy an individual or family pass at the pool itself, or do you have to come into the office?
I believe you have to come in the office, is that correct, Melissa?
Yes, they have to, yeah, they have to purchase the passes in person, right, so otherwise
Oh, that's because, oh yeah, wait a second, that's because we have to take their ID, right? We have to verify that they are a resident of Newington.
Yes, and then we have the the key fobs, the pass for each person, so we do those here in the office. But they could take pass at the, a cool house, and they didn't, I wanna kind of talk, but people were like me, you know.
Any other comments? If not, no participation.
Post to adjourn.
I Thank you, Don, all the favor.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah. Have fun, Bill.